Shall we pray? Gracious God, have we fallen for thinking the day that you've given us with opportunities that you provide for us on a daily basis. Our hearts are heavy for those who call out in the Father, for those families and those victims. We ask you, God, to lift them up unto you this time, that they may be comforted. And follow it that thou wilt be done through the actions that are taken, for that you'll bless each one around us, days and quarters we make decisions that we feel best for the citizens that we represent. God in government, all of our deeds, for you are truly God, and we can finish your work taking. Jesus Christ, we ask of these things.
Our prayers are to the Lord, and to the nations of men. To the people of the public, who sit their hands on their nations under God, in the visible, whether they're ready or not, just as far as.
All right, good to see everyone here tonight. We ready to do the roll call? Has everyone had a chance to look at previous minutes? If so, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes. We have a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. I got one step ahead of us, too. We'll do the minutes, then we'll do the agenda. Jackie, is yours, Bobby? Rush?
I do not.
That's okay. That's okay. Okay, well, I can't say that I skipped one out. We gotta go back to the broken agenda. Maybe this is a good sound. All right. Has every, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda the way it is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda before you approve it.
Okay.
On item eight, I would like to insert a new item B, and then B and C down one. Have that for an appointment through the replacement of a person to serve District Twenty until the election in November.
Mm-hmm.
As I understood, the original election's gonna be August, and now it's gonna be November, so I'd like to see that district with their representation during that period.
Okay.
Let's hope so.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a second already. Okay. Now, before we go on the agenda with this, would you repeat what you, uh, what you're doing?
Yes, sir, I'll try.
Okay.
Uh, on item number eight, elections appointments and confirmation, insert between the current A and B, a new item number B for a replacement for District Twenty, at least for consideration of one. And then move item B to C, and C to D.
Okay, D go where C is, and C goes where D is.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, why would that not be put under D, other, and lead to others as are?
Yeah, that could work.
It could work.
Why don't we do that? It'd be a lot easier.
Where I would put it in.
Is that okay with you, since you're making them in, huh?
I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Okay, so we're just gonna add it to D. Replacement? Any other discussion? If not, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is the time for discussion on that, yet it's altered up as far as the agenda change, or we should wait till we come to that item, but I guess if you would be opposed to doing that, now would be a time to discuss it.
Okay.
And I'm opposed to adding that to the agenda, because I feel the people of that district, or those districts, be represented, should be the ones voting for that person in the November election. And we should not be appointing somebody to give them an unfair advantage in that election. Those people will not be unrepresented. There's twenty of us here that'll be represented.
I guess I'll rebut that, Bobby. I'd like for you to look to your left and look to your right, and there's two people that you made motions for to appoint until they, until we had time to have an election. This is no different. We, uh, those people shouldn't be disenfranchised from being represented by somebody from their district.
Other appointments have been by requirements provisions of Tennessee code annotated in law, and we adhere to that. Okay, I stand by what I've said, and when the election is in November, that soon, I feel the people of those districts should be the ones to make a choice, and we shouldn't be giving anybody else an unfair advantage for those positions.
Mayor?
Go, go ahead.
I'm not sure if the election commissioner is here to issue.
Yes.
Mayor, I've got clarification, and under section, I've forgotten.
Well, Rush, just call her, uh, just in case somebody wants to ask her, would you mind coming to the podium? Good to have you here.
But the question is, this body has the authority to appoint a replacement commissioner until the next general election, is that not correct?
No, until November.
Till the next general election?
General election, which is in November. But, yeah, the election for, the regular county commission for the rest of the town is, is August of 2014. The first meeting in November will run until August 2014.
I see. This body has the authority to appoint a commissioner until the November election?
For three months.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, uh, this brought up a slight, uh, call, because I certainly don't have a problem with, with, uh, anybody wanting to represent, uh, Twentieth, uh, District. The only thing that, that I have a problem with is, is the particular individual that has put his name so-called in the hat, uh, uh, we, I don't know if somebody else is out there or not. Uh, I mean, I don't think it was ever advertised, I, I don't know if anybody went out and asked for anybody. They may be somebody else out there that might be interested. I kinda feel the way Bobby does, uh, as far as letting somebody in, I guess, and have a little bit of advantage, uh, certainly wants those people to have representation, but I don't know if there's somebody else out there that might, you know, say, hey, tomorrow, say, you know, I wish I would've known that, I would've liked to have done that.
Uh, Mr. Kelly, are you wanna vote on him tonight? Is that right? Well, let's ask her, can we do that without advertising?
To appoint someone?
Yes. Can we do it without running advertising like we did the others? The others, we had to run an advertisement.
You probably still would have to run an advertisement to appoint someone.
Okay.
Just, I mean, if it was legal then, it's legal now, that that's the way it be done.
Well, have we run advertising before we go to position?
Roxanne did, yeah, right.
I mean, that's what you told us to do.
Right.
I don't believe the state code says you have to advertise. I believe what it says in state code is that, uh, at the next regularly scheduled meeting, you can't appoint someone if you so choose. It doesn't say anything in state code about advertising.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go back to her. What is your opinion?
Well, I know, I know what, what Roxanne advertised was, the Republican Party and the Democrat Party is supposed to nominate.
Yes, but I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about where we fill these other positions. You know, when we had somebody else, do you have to advertise?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Is there, is there?
Mr. Kelly was saying you don't have to.
Well, is there a duty for, for, Mr. Heskey, or someone, just the whole state, vote real quick and verify? It'll be pretty quick.
I read it last night, and it mentions nothing of advertising.
Okay. Does, I guess you could step up to your office and look it up and see.
I can find it.
Yeah. I guess the question is, why have we been advertising?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not, it's getting, it's, it's, brother, I don't think the statute requires it, I think it's a provision that the commission, uh, makes the appointment, and has a stretch to make the appointment. The question is, though, I think when we had about the second one back, there was discussion about how it should be done, and if we needed to follow somewhat of a regular format, and we did that, as I recall, from the last two. I think it was some appointment about the second or third, the fact that's been made, that there was interview process, certain, uh, applications. You're shaking your head, but.
I'm just saying, we've been so insistent, we started with some formal process last night, and never been approved with it.
Uh, go ahead. Go ahead, Bobby, with what you're saying.
That's what I recall of doing, and then following that in the next process, and seeing, yeah, I'm trying, but I think that's what.
Even if they do, even if we have done the last two, I guess the question is, do you have to advertise? And the answer is?
I don't think you have to, I think the commission's got the authority to make the appointment.
Okay, that's what we need to know. Any other discussion?
No, I guess, I guess I was gonna say, if that's the case, does it need to be verified for Commissioner Kelly's, um, I guess amendment, or whatever's added to the agenda?
Well, if you're asking me, or you asking me, or you asking me if it can be added?
Not if it can be added, but I think there needs to be a clarification as to exactly what the process is.
Whether or not it has to be advertised?
Right, and, uh, Commissioner Ricken said, you read it last night, it doesn't have to be advertised.
Okay, do you have a copy of that?
We need to find out, Mr. for sure.
Okay. Was it in the seat has book?
Yes.
Okay, do you, can you go to your office and find out? How long would it take you to do that?
A few minutes.
Okay, we're gonna take just a few minute break, so she can go look at that.
I tell you, I don't wanna delay the time. I think other would allow us to go with it. I mean, we can certainly approve the agenda, other, let's get rid of some other business. By the time she comes back, we'll know exactly what she says, and the other, if it's allowed, we can take it up on the other, seven, I mean, eight, D.
Would that require suspending the rules, though?
No, I think the, I think the agenda, I mean, if, if Mark Henry raised the issue, I think the motion to do that appointment under other would've been appropriate anyway.
No, go ahead and pass some discussions if you want to.
I'm just saying, we can adopt the agenda, leave other, because I think other would allow a motion to make any other appointment.
Well, he's already made, uh, a motion to amend the.
No, he didn't, he said he was there sweeping under D.
But he made a motion to, to, um, yes, to make a change.
He did actually make a change.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Rush, it won't take but a few minutes. When we vote on this agenda with that change, if it, if, if it passes, then it passes with Mr. Kelly's change. Okay? Hey, there's no sense being in a hurry here, we, we ain't got out of here in a, this three or four minutes is not gonna be the, the killer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I thought the information I read said that the Democratic Party, Republican Party had to August fourteen, sixteen, to submit names, or anybody that was in, today, and I thought one person was supposed to make application today.
Yeah, but that's not what he's talking about, Commissioner. He's, he's talking about just filling temporarily. Hey, Mark, if you wanted to, I'm talking to him, if you'll just withdraw that change and we can put it under other, and then you can do it at that time, so we'll just vote on just the agenda. Is that okay with you? Okay. All right, so let's just vote on the agenda. We're ready to vote. All right, Commissioner Ricken, we're gonna move on, like you suggested. Yes, we, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Who made the motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner?
Ricken.
And Commissioner, okay. All right, all right, let's go vote. All right. That's it. Thank you. Let's have a count, please.
Okay.
All right. So I guess, we're moving on now. Item seven, resolution of the moral, sense of, and condemnation. Ms. Patton?
Resolution, two thousand twelve, twenty-two. Resolution in honor and recognition of Christopher Burr for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas, for the past two years, Chris Burr has served as a Coffee County Commissioner for the Twentieth District, as well as the Chairman of the Jail Review Committee. Whereas, as the Chairman of the Jail Review Committee, Commissioner Burr demonstrated an unselfish commitment and devotion to the citizens of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commends Chris Burr for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Chris Burr receive a copy of this resolution, and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this twenty-fourth day of July, two thousand twelve.
Motion to approve? Second. Second, all right. Any discussion? All right, as a vote, please. Thank you. All right, let's have a count. Okay, just give it to us, we'll need to get the next one out.
Resolution, two thousand twelve, twenty-three. Resolution in honor and recognition of Allen Dale Goodwin, deceased, for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Lieutenant Allen Dale Goodwin earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as an employee of the Coffee County Sheriff's Department for the past twenty years, and the last thirteen, serving as a school resource officer. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commends Mr. Allen Dale Goodwin for his outstanding service to the Coffee, to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Mr. Allen Dale Goodwin receive a copy of this resolution, and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record, passed and so ordered this twenty-fourth day of July, two thousand twelve.
So, Miss Chairman? Second. All right, thank you. Any discussion? Question, we filed this vote, please. All right, let's have a count. I don't think we have any other, we don't have any other, Ms. Patton. We just go to item eight?
Whoa, 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 I don't wanna, let's clarify that. If, we'll be coming back to other.
Uh, it's under election and appointments, Commissioner, that we're having to.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay? That's okay, thank you. That's all right. The main thing is, there's another other condition. Long day, isn't it?
Right, election appointments and confirmation. This is not a race. Fifty has Leslie M. Hill, Teresa H. McFadden, Terry A. Russ, Krista P. Smith, Allison B. Stacy, Marbella Seawaters, Melinda J. Anderson, Kathy J. Byram, Karen E. Crowley, Carmelita O'Ward, Richard W. Gabriel, Holly Hill, John R. LeVar.
Motion to approve? All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
People don't respect that, John.
Pardon? No, thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count.
Okay, B, ambulance authority.
Okay, and under that, we have a, we have a, uh, appointment for rule, Manchester and Telom. Okay, do we have a rule appointment, the ambulance authority?
Mr. Chairman, Rural Caucus wanted to reappoint Mr. Bayle to the ambulance authority.
All right, thank you. Manchester.
We want to appoint this Ann Prithby.
All right, thank you. And Telom?
Telom wishes to delay his appointment to the September, um, commission meeting.
Okay, on the Telom one, okay. All right, so we're gonna vote on the rule and the Manchester. And I'll take a nomination for a motion to do that in a second. All right, all right. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, why are we delaying the appointment of the Telom persons to ambulance authority?
Uh, there'll be a Telom answer there.
That was, the majority wishes of the Telom caucus, let's see.
Okay, any other discussion? I think questions been called.
Is there some reason for that? I mean, you said that's the majority wishes.
We're just not prepared to make the appointment.
Does that mean Mr. Bradford stays there?
He, uh, no, he stays there until the morning. Commissioner, you have any other comments?
Can we vote on these individuals?
We can. Okay. Do you wanna make a motion to, well, we've already made a motion and a second to vote on? We've already got Manchester and, uh, the rule, do you wanna change it and vote individual?
Uh, vote on those two.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, we're gonna vote on those two, Manchester and the rule. Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count.
Seven, eight, yes.
Okay, okay. All right. All right, Ms. Patton, the next thing is?
Mr. Chairman, oh, the delay, is that a motion to delay that appointment? Do we have to vote on that?
All right, hang on just a minute. Commissioner Bryant, you said that covered it when we voted on Manchester and Telom, I mean, Manchester and the rule.
Okay, so there's not a motion to delay or postpone the other appointment?
No, no, they're, they're already voted, and we voted rule and Manchester, but Telom, when we've all voted, that let them put theirs off until September. Yeah, yeah, when it, once we voted, we voted for Manchester and Telom, I mean, Manchester and the rule, and Joe says that that gave them the right to put theirs off in September, because that's what they wanted to do. Is that right?
That gave the caucus that right.
Yeah. Okay, did, did you hear what he said? He said, that gave the caucus the right to do that, but you could have nominations from the floor, if they wanted to nominate. Anybody? Any questions?
Ms. Chairman? Ms. Chairman, over here.
Yeah, okay.
It, it just seems like you would still need to vote on the appointment, or whether you approve to put it off till September or not, because now it's just dangling out there. I mean, that doesn't make, it doesn't.
Well, according to what Joe says.
Because whether there's an appointment, it's gotta be either made or voted on to either.
Here's the commission or nomination. Hold on. He's, go ahead, you, I don't sense maybe you relant, would you?
Virgil, uh, from what I understand, the Telom caucus did not have an appointment. And if the commission votes that they can't put it off, they still don't have an appointment. But you as a commissioner, or am I as a commissioner, can nominate somebody from the floor.
To fill that position.
Fill that position. And, and if, if that were to happen, of course, they.
Then we'd have to vote on it.
They'd, they'd vote on it now.
Let's get one more clarification. The delay of appointment of Mr. Bradford would still serve until that appointment is.
Field.
Field.
Mm-hmm. Now, does everybody understand what Joe's saying? That if somebody wanted to make a motion to nominate somebody, any commissioner could do it, and we'd have to vote on it, after we got a second? If, if you wanted to fill that position instead of, instead of putting it off, like Telom wants to. Does everybody understand that?
Mr. Chairman, does that motion have to be somebody from the Telom caucus?
According to Joe, it don't. Any, any commissioner can make that motion. What you'd be doing is making a motion to appoint.
I'd like to vote that we want Jimmy Bradford to continue in that position.
Okay, we have a motion for Jimmy Bradford to continue in that position. Do we have a second? We have a second. Now, let's get down to the discussion.
I'm gonna make a motion that we put Jody Boston.
Okay, so, so now we have a motion to put Jody Boston. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All right, let's, let's get into some discussion here.
Mayor, first of all, I wanna make another motion to table this motion, because I think this commission is stepping out of normal precedence, and I really think, we should really rethink getting it in this debate tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to table.
Second.
What, what, table which motion? We have two on the floor. Okay, motion.
Hold on, man.
First of all, uh, what, what you actually had were nominations, and, uh, a nomination is not the same thing as a motion. Uh, I don't know that, in fact, you, I don't think you have to have say. I don't know that, in fact, you, I don't think you have to have seconds for nominations. You got two people nominated. Now, and, and those are what's on the floor. So from that standpoint, Mr. Bricken, I don't know that there's a motion to table, but if the commission does not want to follow through with these nominations, then you could make a motion to postpone electing these nominations till whatever time you specify. The election, that would be a motion to postpone. I don't think it's this time a motion to table is in order because technically nominations are not, are not actually motions.
So.
I'll be glad to make a motion to postpone the election.
Until?
Until September, this may.
Okay, we have, we have.
I have a second.
Do we have a second?
I have our second.
Do we have a second? Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay.
Now, I have a question on that. Does that close the nominations, or can we reopen the floor for a third or a fourth nominee at that time?
In, in September, when that comes back up, you would have to open the floor for nominations again.
But it closes it tonight.
It closes it tonight.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to postpone the election till, to September. We have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Joe, let's just make sure everybody understands what we're doing.
If I understand Mr. Bricken's motion correct and the second, this is a motion to postpone these elections until the September meeting. So if you vote for the motion to postpone, then you're delaying making these elections until the September meeting. If you vote against, and, and that passes, then you will have to go ahead and vote tonight on those two nominations.
So a yes would postpone and a no would mean we'd have to keep on voting on the other two? Okay, does everybody understand? Do you want to change your vote? Do you know? You want to vote no? Okay. All right, let's, let's have a count. Say what now? Okay, you, you made the vote no? What is? Ten to nine? Okay, ten yeses. All right, okay, so it passed, and we're, this is postponed to September, there's ten
Is that a majority of the commissioners in attendance? Joe?
Yes. Ten to nine, but not majority.
It's a majority of the commissioners in attendance, not the twenty-one.
Mr. Husky's second. State statute five, five, one oh nine, provides for voting county commission. Majority of all members constituting the county legislative body and not merely a majority of the quorum shall be required to elect county officials required by law to be elected by the body, fix salaries, appropriate money, or transact other business coming before the legislative body in regular special section. So it sounds like to pass anything it takes. Well, this, and I think what, when somebody, if they hired it, not only they don't count, but still they go in. We have a ten to ten tie in that case, and not the chairman. Good high rate. We have, we've got an absentee. Tim Morris is not here. He is a member of the legislative body, so he counts scores for twenty for this purpose, so we have a twenty to twenty tie. I didn't understand. Okay. Robert.
By what you read, we need a majority of the legislative body, which is twenty. We have one vacancy and one absentee. The absentee would count as a no. So that gives us a ten to ten tie.
Well, if you interpret it that way, you really didn't spell that out in the section. I understand what you're talking about. Sometimes that's treated that way in certain sections. Our group didn't spell that out. Statute didn't, but if we do have a tie, then it, then it comes to the chairman to break it down. But it's not, it's not a tie right now.
It's only always been, you have to have a eleven, and it's, it's, it's eleven, whether you got somebody out, whatever, it doesn't, that, that doesn't play a part on what we have in common.
Okay, so the motion fails. After this lengthy discussion here, the motion fails, and we're going to have to vote on the two.
I would like Mr. Husky to reread that voting section.
Uh, I'll read the whole section for you. Let's go down to page section five, item five, item one oh nine. A, a majority of all the members constituting the county legislative body and not merely a majority of the quorums shall be required to, and then a list number, one, elect county officials required by law to be elected by the body, two, fix salaries, three, appropriate money, and, or, transact all other business coming before the county legislative body in regular or special section. That last one's kind of catch-up. And it goes on to say, if the members of the county legislative body are equally divided upon any question coming before them upon which they may lawfully act, then and only then a county mayor serving as chair may cast a deciding vote. Uh, two, if a person serving as chair of county legislative body is a regular member of the county legislative body, which is not applicable to us, such person may not break a tie vote in the capacity to care, but may cast a vote in the first instance as a regular member of the body, in other words, he can vote when everybody else votes.
I'm, I'm not certain that Mr. Virg's seat, being a vacated seat, shouldn't count as a part of the.
I, I don't think it does. I think I've read something that it doesn't, but still it'd take eleven out of twenty to be a majority. It'd take eleven out of twenty-one.
Does twenty out, ten out of twenty, how is, is that a tie?
That would be a tie if you actually had ten, if you actually had that.
Well, we have ten, and we got twenty potential candidates. Huh?
We got nineteen.
Well, but the much, the most we could have were twenty. So we, so we got ten out of twenty that voted for the most, twenty out of possible, out of the twenty possible seats.
That's one of those perks that comes up sometimes. I've seen it happen in a lot, it happens legislature sometimes. See, you have to see a government, it's, you know, you've got your requirements of what it's got to be, and if it, if it doesn't follow that capacity, you die.
I'm still not clear.
I'd say it takes that.
All right, so we're going to have to vote on the, the two gentlemen, because they've nominated.
So my question is, what happened if neither one of them get eleven?
Okay.
Take eleven votes, three of the one of them get.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, can we restate who we voted on?
Yes, yes, we will. Jody Boss and Jimmy Bradford. Those are the two.
Somebody, would somebody tell the commission who Jody Boss is, what his job is?
Uh, because I don't know.
I'd be, I'd be glad to give that.
Okay, sure.
Jody Boss is, and for the past fifteen years has been, the city administrator for the city of Telom. He runs the fire department, and has oversight on, and I should say, an oversight on all aspects within Telom, and he is well qualified for the position. And before we get into the vote, I certainly want the whole discussions on where we stand
Go ahead. Did you want to say something, Commissioner?
Are we discussing nominations now?
No, uh, yes, we're getting ready to vote on, on the two nominations.
Certainly. If we're, we're about to vote without discussions, again, I really regret.
Well, we, we, we can have discussions, that's what we're doing now.
All right. I really regret this coming up tonight with the, the full budget agenda in front of us. And I'm deeply disappointed in my fellow commissioners, not respecting the Telom caucus in wanting to delay this. And in all due respect to Commissioner Bradford, and we had a frank discussion last night, we just did not feel like, and it's, and I'm not totally ruling out Jimmy, but I wanted in the title of the budget process to certainly evaluate the leadership of the EMS. For two years there, the EMS department has been through a, I'm going to call it kind of a state of chaos. Two years ago, it almost just busted this county. And I don't know if it's Mr. Kathy, other management, or the whole EMS board, but this county certainly was put almost through the wringer, and I think the public confidence in the EMS is just not there, there. The question about whether the management of EMS is properly run is certainly a question, and it's the EMS board that assures the proper management. There, we may have been some financial corrections, but I can't necessarily give that financial corrections to the management or the EMS board. I think it was done because it finally got into some competent hands, and got to be directed. The issue about the EMS board, we got issues dealing with how they're handling the first responder question that's not been properly, I think, addressed. In this budget, and you will come up tonight, not, there's a sixteen or fifteen and a half percent salary increase for EMS, EMTs in this budget that never got clearly covered in budget finance. We passed a budget that we thought only included step raises for county employees. And it was never clear to us, and I think that is clear, is not misrepresentation to the commission, is, 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 I'm not sure what the right word is, but it's certainly playing a game of smoke and mirrors, trying to bypass the committees. So it bothers me that that type of management and leadership is operating EMS. I certainly, and I'm not, I was hoping that we could possibly flesh out some other candidates, not necessarily commissioners. Jody Boss, main, he came to the caucus last night. I, I don't know if he didn't, he certainly expressed an interest in running, but I don't know if he is a hundred percent the right person. There could be other citizens that might certainly prove to be better appointees. It might work out that Jimmy could, but in my mind, Jimmy needs to either get some redirection of EMS clear, and my confidence, and I don't know if y'all, and I told Jimmy last night, if there was a general election for the EMS chairman, he would not have been elected in Coffee County. And that's just based on the, the issues that have come up, and I, bless his heart, I'm not sure why he won. And, and, and all honesty, I'm not sure, but, but the track record for the last two years is just not there, and if this commission makes this reappointment, and something blows up at EMS, people that vote for it are the only ones that this body and the citizens need to vote to.
Mr. Mayor, I continue that. That's been one of my problems with EMS before I even got on the board. I continually asked for information on it, on the issues we had. I've never, and I mean never, been able to get a straight answer. It's something that was logical and sensible. This deal with Telom and first responders and the pettiness that has gone on in that respect between us and Telom is just frightful. That EMS and the ambulance authority is direly, I'll say hated, but they are disliked in Telom. I have gone through a period of time now with, I'm having cardio rehab, and the people in there, one of the first things all of the folks told me is, don't put nine one one in your service, get a neighbor's number when you have an emergency, so that they can take you to the hospital, because you can't trust the ambulance. That's what we're building in this thing, and that's a lack of management, and I'm going to echo Rush's saying, I certainly don't want rural Coffee County, Telom, and how it's supposed to manage and run things, because it's run poorly, and it's being done on a good old boy system. Raises were snuck into here, that's my view of the world, because you don't come up with this. I ask that you get a piece of paper on your table so you can look at it. And I'm going to refer back to it just because I have to look at it again to believe it, that we came along at, at this time and have a huge budget problem, and I hear EMS the whole time complaining about how their budget's being cut, and when I get down to look at it, I find out that we are going to go up by fifteen point seven percent in our overall labor, and that's pricing last year's labor exactly as it was worked with the new amounts that were put into the budget. And it, and I'm sorely disappointed, sorely disappointed, that we have a group of, in the salary review committee, that in the last month, the weeks before, the couple weeks before, we're going into this process of budget approving raises, and I call them raises, or salary adjustments, it's cost to the people of Coffee. It's costing the people of Coffee County a lot of money. And, you know, we're looking at several hundred thousand dollars worth of differences. And that's not counting adding in the two new employees. My other, excuse me, my other comment, if you're not aware of it, we had another person almost die in Tallahassee over on Kings Ridge. And that ambulance, emergency ambulance in my mind, was making a run over to Lynch, or over to Lynchburg to do a scheduled run. So it wasn't available when the guy has a life-threatening condition. And that's why it took so long to get that ambulance there. And the first responders weren't sent out until the family called back and asked for them specifically to be released. Folks, in Tallahassee, that is unacceptable for us to be putting our people at risk because of total mismanagement that's going on in this authority.
Commissioner Alfred.
I can appreciate Eric, all the comments and everything he said. I, I wanna say I've had two different situations in our family over the last several years that if it had not been for the ambulance service, our family members would have died. And I appreciate what the ambulance service does. There are some concerns, back when I served as chairman of budget finance. Those were things that we took to the table, we worked through those situations. And I think that that's probably where we're at. It's a work in progress, and it's gonna continue to be worth a work in progress with the way healthcare is changing. So you can fix it today, it's gonna be different tomorrow because of what we've got coming down from the federal guideline. So it is gonna be a, it's gonna be very task-oriented, and it's gonna be very challenging for all of us. So this, a lot of times making changes, that seems like that's the best thing to do. But unless you're bringing on somebody that has had a really good history in working in these types of situations, uh, maybe bringing on more, so just be cautious, I will caution you there because of all the healthcare guideline changes. Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Bradford. Name, name Commissioner Doug.
Okay, I, I'm not making campaigns, Peter, okay? I just wanna clarify some things. Mr. Kelly, you just mentioned that, uh, we, the ambulance authority, had to sneak in raises. February twenty-third, you made a motion to carry that forward.
We can get that.
Made it, February twenty-third, you made the motion, and the paragraph reads that there would be a pay increase, ask for a, a day ambulance and a pay adjustment. And you said that was right to sneak it in. Excuse me, please. Did you make, make the comments at the emergency room? Ambulance was out of town, out of county. It was not, it was on Wilson Avenue when the call came in. Yes, in Tallahassee. They was, ambulance was in Tallahassee on Wilson Avenue when the call come in that the gentleman had failed. Yes, I agree one hundred percent of, of what, uh, Mr. Alfred said, that, uh, we're constantly changing, constantly, for years and years and years, for many years. All I heard out of the budget finance was break even, break even, break in, make money. That's what we tried to do, we tried to move into the private sector to try and break even. Now, now, all of a sudden, someone like the fellow Commissioner of Tallahassee is saying, oh my God, we're living in the private sector, we don't have any emergency ambulance. I know I couldn't get my ambulance back, and a lot of my fellow Tallahassee commissioners voted against that, that we put a new station down there, that we got a new ambulance down there. Didn't get the support from people with that thing, and the Tallahassee caucus. I couldn't get another ambulance, so we had to choose to get a day ambulance. That day ambulance will run, it's a 911 ambulance, all the time except when we can try to use it as, uh, to pick up private, private patients, to try to break even. We're constantly moving, constantly changing. Talk about directions? This, this commission gives us mixed directions. It gives us mixed directions. One day we gotta break even, the next day you wanna save lives. Tallahassee is, is wanting to use firemen and EMTs, and I'm trying to get ambulances and paramedics as planes. And I'm not getting any support, help from the Tallahassee caucus, Tallahassee commissioners on this. I'm surprised that Mayor Curley is listening to some of the people that gave, uh...
Oh, that's Mayor Davis' call.
Yes, Mr.
That, uh, gave, uh, Mayor Davis some, uh, advice that probably helped him get the fee. But, you know, we need more ambulances, planes up. We need more paramedics, planes up. Now, you can look at surrounding counties, they got five hundred thousand dollar budgets, and they accept, five hundred thousand dollar deficit, they accept. I, I, I'm sorry, but I didn't, I'm not really trying to campaign, but, you know, Mr. Kelly is telling you some half-truths, half-truths.
Commissioner Doug.
Yes, what has been attributed to poor management in the last six months or a year has really been a failure to get the proper collections in. And it wasn't poor management at all, it was just, uh, the inability to get, get the, uh, collections that the reception gets. Uh, right now, I think there's what, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in arrears? That's better than any of the surrounding counties. So that tells you something about what's going on. And I think the problem with Tallahassee is that, uh, first responder, they wanna run fire trucks for every call. And there's some question whether that's necessary. But, uh, I think that our ambulance authority's done an excellent job. And I'm concerned that any, any major changes they wanna make in Tallahassee will affect the rest of the county, not representing the rule. Thank you.
Mr. Van.
I have been on the ambulance service since my husband died and I took his place. And none of us take our job and make the service lightly. I am not prioritizing, and everybody knows that, and that's fine. Jimmy works very hard on this, he puts his whole heart into this. He probably was one of the only, or one of the few commissioners that absolutely spends probably forty hours a week like a job in this or more. Um, the first responders, I think that Tallahassee Fire Department should respond to some of the twenty-five things listed. But one of them is like a fracture. Okay, if you broke your leg in Tallahassee, the fire department over there wants to be able to come along, there'll be the police there, then you've got the EMS there. Now, the people in Tallahassee are gonna be paying for this gas for the police and the, uh, the fire department to go to this broken leg. So it's just an extra cost. I think that the first responders should be where like at a shooting or something very, very major. But I don't think that they should be at every single call in Tallahassee that's made, and that's what they want. And I feel like this has been trotted into the newspaper instead of into the ambulance, because nobody, Mr. Chan, or Richard, whatever his name, has not come to any of our meetings lately. But it came up in the paper in full force. And Mr. Kelly, I have great respect for you, I think you're very smart. But what you discussed in the meetings and in budget is not what you say at our meetings.
Commissioner Bradford, yes, go ahead.
Yes, to answer, uh, Mr. Brian's question to start out with. Quietly, we want to postpone until September. There are some issues still hanging that have not been resolved and hopefully would be resolved, at least in a better position to make a more informed decision on where we go forward in September that we cannot make now. Jody Boss was willing to step forward if that were the choice. Uh, and Mayor Curley said if he had to pick somebody right there, Jody was two years left, so the gentleman by left. Uh, that was sort of a de-jerk reaction, respect Jody, thank you, did a good job. But I don't know that there's not a conflict there between the city administrator and somebody on the ambulance authority. So going back to, um, the original motion to postpone till September is still our best choice.
Commissioner Bradford, go ahead. Do you have any other comments, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll make one. And I respect what Jimmy said about, I did make the motion back in February, that was February. This is July, and that didn't come before the committees until July. There was no reason to postpone that, and when I understood it at the meeting, and I may have misunderstood it, that it was to bring on the day ambulance, which there was a commitment already being made. So we were trying to establish salaries ahead of time, so we know what we could offer those people if we had a day ambulance service. We certainly wanted to have a position ahead of time on what that salary structure was gonna be. It was not in my mind, because I never once saw, and if this, if somebody on that ambulance authority could show me where they saw this kind of seventeen percent increase coming up in there in the pay. And you guys were in agreement with that at a time when we knew we were fighting for a budget. I guess I'm surprised, and I believe if I go back to what the requirements are when I go to the, the folks on the other side, and when I, when I looked at the Salary Review, there's supposed to be a written documentation and supposed to include what the difference in cost is. If that was present that night at the meeting, I looked at the minutes, and there's no indication in those minutes of what those dollar numbers were. There's another issue that took place in that meeting that came on that needs to be discussed too when we get to the budget part, because it's another case where last-minute things happen to affect the budget by giving people step raises or grade increases, and I'm not sure that they were justified.
Commissioner Duncan.
I'm gonna try to avoid repeating myself, I do wanna ask, uh...
I do that a lot myself, Commissioner, I don't think that's important.
The first responding issue is, is, to me, representative of what I call the management part of. Now, if Tallahassee chooses to spend their resources and send out trucks, uh, bumper trucks or whatever on every call, that's their, I should say that they're right, that they, their elected body wants to do that. Shouldn't bother us, I mean, that's their choice. We're not, we're not their policemen or their finances. Sometimes it doesn't make any sense, but I'm not sure why Mr. Cathy is, is, is not said, fine, you can go to all twenty-five items on the list or fifty on the list. And it just bothers me why that is, is even an issue. Now, I will repeat how bothersome I am on that during the budget process, in every budget finance meeting, on EMS, it was clear, we supported the two new people for the day service. And everyone else was strictly step raises in the county. I never left one meeting, and, and, and when the budget was put together, not believing until last week that that was the case. And then when I found out last week that EMS had fifteen and a half percent raises included in their budget and went to Salary Review to request it, I was absolutely shocked.
Commissioner Bradford, did you wanna call your department head up or anything? You don't wanna call your department? Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cathy's in the audience. There's a number, number items addressed here, number of issues raised. Mr. Cathy is the head of the EMS department, I think we all hear from Mr. Cathy. Yes, I am.
Mr. Cathy, uh, Mr. Douglas, you'll be next after he gets through, and Mr. Chan.
I'd like to bring about some of the things that, that y'all have said about responding. Mr. Shastain, Jody Boss and I have been discussing this first responder all week long. We have working on it, and we're going forward.
Is, is that my working, or can you, your, yours is tough, yeah.
We are going forward, the program, I'm leading what's wrong. Mr. Shastain, Jody Boss, man. And right now, we're running every call until we can get this memorandum of understanding resolved.
But John, this has been an issue that's been months, yes, it has, we can go back to newspapers. This has been going on, I can't say if it's three months or six months. And all of a sudden there that, I'm gonna say the pressure's finally got to a point, maybe you're coming around. But why did it take so long to just, to say?
We have a program in place, so it's in place. I've got the memorandum safe, Mr. Shastain got, and it's been working very well. I don't, all of a sudden, I don't know where all this other stuff came from. I've got a letter from Fire Department, Mr. Shastain, I received in May, saying everything's okay. And so we've worked on it constantly, trying to improve the program. I've got one EMT I have that works for me, he's very proficient, and he's allowed to do that, don't offend me. And, and you've asked, any firemen down there, they're running a call. I've got twelve books of rug sheets, we ran two hundred for some calls in the past year. And they've run the call. I don't know why this guy I've met out of the forest, all of a sudden one night it's in the pipeline. And we have been working together, Mr. Shastain, and our chief Shastain, and Mr. Boss. And we got a meeting Monday to try to improve the program. But we have a program in place. I can show it to you tomorrow until I go meet it there. We have a memorandum on Saturday, Mayor Curley signed, and I...
How many items are all of them?
It doesn't matter about the items. We're running emergency calls, and some of those items is covered under that twenty-five criteria. Tallahassee is not a metro county. The item stolen there is from Chadaville and Hamilton County. That river splits that city, and they have to have all that criteria. I've got Cookville's agreement, I've got Giles County, I have four agreements up there. They don't run all those criteria. Cookville only runs eight, and that's where I got most of my site, because under those topics, it can be covered under any call. If you got unconscious responses and maybe an I-P, it could be a chat plan. So they are responding to those calls. And I don't have this kind of hand, and y'all don't understand. But it's, the program's in place.
Uh, John, if you don't mind staying up there, Commissioner Duncan, did you have a comment, did Commissioner Chan?
I just have a comment. Part of our problem is that last year, we let, we laid off EMTs and paramedics to balance the budget. And we're trying to get a few of those back so that we can provide the service. We're not able to do that.
Commissioner Chan.
I think part of the problem is, we're, we're looking at this from an emotional standpoint, and rather than a, a dollars business standpoint. And whenever I'm making a, a decision on how I wanna vote, or, or something along those lines, I always look at, uh, if this was my business, uh, and over the last eight years it lost six million dollars, would I look to make a change? And I've heard the argument many times about what's a nonprofit. I work for a nonprofit, nonprofit doesn't mean lose money. And if I managed our nonprofit, uh, in the, in the, in the way that caused us to lose upwards of six million dollars in eight years, I promise you I wouldn't have a job. Uh, so I just wanna impress upon people that while it's, it seems to be an emotional issue, it's not emotional, it's not personal. It's, it's very much about dollars and cents. And when you are looking to manage a large service such as this, that is very valuable, you've got great employees. But there are questions about the, the leadership and management. Sometimes it is the right thing to take a, a look in a new direction. Businesses and companies do that all the time, and they get turned around. You don't have to look too far back and, and see the auto industry back in ninety-eighties with Dodge and whatnot. and whatnot did the same thing. And I want to empower people to think about it without the emotion attached to it. Think about it with, if this was your business and your dollars, and you were writing the checks every single week, would you change management, or would you look for a change in direction, or would you keep doing the same thing expecting something different?
Okay. Commissioner Catty?
Okay. As far as the budget being, I will serve up. And I brought my budget in February to that more, this attached to the budget. We all went over on that. We all went over. The, these are not raises. It's what you call like marketing, keeping in touch with the other counties and trying to keep our people here. If we don't raise the salary, they go to Shenwood, or they go to Warren County. I missed both of those yesterday. And that is called a marketing adjustment rate, and they go in every five years, and they get the rates up, and then it doesn't ask for five more years for that adjustment, because you're going to be, each county's in competition. With their employees, Bedford County raised that call, my person go a little bit and make an extra call. We all have improved this year. Our deficit right now is 178,000. We have worked our butts off this past year, and you'll look at it. And the chart over here, we brought back 1, 1,838,250,000, with 178 in the deficit. And my people that ran a call, that's called, the month of June, we brought in 195,000 dollars with the end of budget finance, which is doing that end of. We are making progress. And that deficit y'all saw years ago, part of it's capital gains, because we went into a new building project. We hired six new people, and if they had continued from November to July, we ran 820 calls. We never had a chance to get off the ground to do that again. And I don't believe it's a match. We got one of the best EMS services in the state, and I can have the state come down here and give you all a little, but I have no problem with this county or the ambulance service. My audit was outstanding. I got good reports. The last 20 years, we've been A-rate. You know, I got invited one. We've won out of 45 counties that was A-rate of service, and we improve every year. I just got a grant for $150,000 for six EKG machines or, or defibrillators on my ambulance. We can do EKG easily. I got that grant from Lamar Alexander and Senator Day, I think it was like Dijon or whatever. And they, I got a grant in three months. Giles County's been out to that grant for the last three years. And with 40 Lamar Alexander and Senator, we had hours in three months. All my radios and equipment and the ambulances were done by home security. Didn't cost this county nothing. I bought 16 radio, and it was home security. We do not hold it, we have no building, all our buildings are paid for, every ambulance is paid for, and all this is the problem for citizens in this county. And we, in the last eight months, I have been in a carriage getting this for a year. I've worked hospitals all on this one. My folks have done an excellent job, and this is not a raise. This is a, a marketing adjustment to the pay where we keep my people here. Most of these people live and work in Coffee County, live in Coffee County. And it's ran just like the EMS, EMS service should have.
Mr. Catty, could I ask, Mr. Catty, could I ask you a couple of questions since you are at the podium? Talking about numbers, of course, I went and tried to get some numbers, perhaps a fact related to this, but in the proposed budget, I was looking at some salaries here. If we look at Warren County, an EMT, $32,800, these are their base salaries, and then paramedic 39,950, and Bedford County, 31,549 on EMT, paramedic 37,406. Now, that's Warren County, Bedford County. In our proposed budget, Coffee County, for those same level positions, 31,18, 31,018, and 36,960. It looks to me, even in our proposed budget, we're not marketing competitive. Another question I have for you, how's our deficit this year compared to other surrounding counties' deficits? How's our county's deficit in EMS compared to other surrounding counties? Did you not say earlier it's significantly less than other counties?
Mr. Catty, what he's asking you is, you said that the debt was 170, that the deficit was 178,000. His question to you is, how about the surrounding counties?
Warren County has a 557,000 dollars deficit. I was proud of that. I was, I was, Bedford County has a 550,000. Giles County has 550,000.
Okay, that's good enough. You answered my question. Another question I have, on the collections, Mr. Duckett referred to this, it's not one of the primary reasons that we got behind on collections, which we've done an excellent job catching up on, and Ms. Edinger has done a great job in her office and working with you on this, and we have called up significantly on this. Okay, was a reason due to basically software and the software system and having it work out, we had a significant problem with vendors and getting that worked out, and once we got that worked out, have we not made significant progress on the collections? Is that true?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Catty, Ms. Fanez wants to ask you something. Mr. Alfred wants to ask you something. Who's other hand? And then Commissioner Bricken, if you don't mind.
I don't want to-
Ms. Fanez, go ahead.
No, I don't want to ask John anything. The nonprofit people that I've seen, they usually get donations, and if you want to donate to anyone's service, probably they probably appreciate it. And secondly, yes, part of this is emotional. I understand that ambulance is business, most definitely, but it is emotional too. When you've had a husband who had a hard time, he talked about these people who did everything they could to save him. Yes, it gets emotional. And if Mr. Fanez, somebody in his family, had a problem, he would be very emotionally involved too, and hopefully would thank God that he had a county ambulance service as good as ours. Thank you.
Commissioner Alfred. Okay.
I'll give it, but, but, Mr. John, and this might be out of order, I don't know. It's just motivation for me to understand what we're getting going on here. Do we have any kind of a career ladder program for, you know, for career sets for your staff, and not only his staff, but a certification program? I know that there are different individuals throughout the county that have certifications that get no recognition for it. I mean, I, I think it's time for us to look at, you know, our, our, one of the best assets that county has is our county courts. And I think we have to look at that and understand the dynamics of our structure of how, you know, we do these step provisions, but what other things do we promote for them? And so do we have anything like that there? I mean, we're, we're talking about retaining, we're talking about retaining employment and, and doing something that, that is going to be beneficial to us, because I can assure you that if you're turning over staff, that's not cost-saving to the county. That's costing us a lot of money, including the training.
Commissioner, I think most of our turnover, our turnover is, was the Sheriff's Department and EMS. As far as the other office, we have very low turnover.
But you do see where I'm, where I'm speaking of this, because turnover's not a good thing that we want to, you know, have a record of the county looking at. And I, I think that especially for some of these areas, we may want to be looking at a, you know, a career set or a career ladder, or, you may already have that in place, John, I don't know, but that would be something I was thinking about while we were doing this discussion.
Also, Commissioner, I was told that that has been discussed inside review about, review about that, the career setting. Commissioner Bricken, and then John, you, Mr. Bricken?
Now, John, salary adjustments and raises, you could, we could have a play on words there, but as far as budget finance, no one, you, Jimmy, no one brought budget finance that, that was 15 and a half percent salary adjustments or raises. And I, I made, no, I never saw that until last week.
And I turned it in with the budget. The charge?
I'm just saying, in any of our discussion at budget and finance, there was no, we could have cleared some of this up somehow, and it just seems like it was a management ploy not to ever raise that issue up and let it get aired out. So we're airing it out tonight.
What went to budget finance? I think Jimmy's brought the right, it doesn't matter if we have any budget.
Never. We go for any minutes, it didn't come up at 15, I made it clear several times, the only raises that this budget contained were step raises. And no one ever said anything different.
I have turned, I've turned-
There, keep on saying, I'm going to say, but, there, last year, we got a C task report, and it had a lot of recommendations for the improvement of EMS. So you might say your audits were fine. That C task report had a whole bunch of recommendations and, and needs for improvement of, of the EMS operation. Secondly, wait, this budget this year showing a $432,000 deficit, and I will contend that some of the revenues that has improved, I believe it was, was legacy revenues from the debacle of the, of this billing of the year before that came in this year. And you and the management made the choice for the vendor, the billing service that blew up there. I don't know how y'all went through the selection process. Obviously, what y'all thought was good, cost this county hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it only became a problem once we saw a significant revenue, and we were already six months almost into the year before budget before we started trying to clean it up. And, and so y'all made that decision, and to me, it shows the confidence that, or the lack of confidence in being able to make good decisions, because y'all chose that bill, that billing vendor a year and a half ago that blew up. So, you know, I think there are issues here.
Well, either we're going to be a business, and just run business, but if you want to run a business, you got to invest in it, and you can't live with five managers. We have run 7,800 some calls this year.
I have been, again, I was certainly a proponent of, of increasing the, the business or, or the day ambulances, and, and, and I think the, the strategy of slowly building up the force and covering the calls can be a successful and eventually bring this $432,000 deficit nearly to break even, but I don't have confidence. And again, I think a lot of this is because we have finally, I hate to call it, put pressure. I'm not certain what EMS would be doing if, if, if this commission and these bodies is not, I hate to say it, been on y'all's case for the last two years.
According to State, we got one of the best in State, and, and that's your opinion? I'm sorry. But I've been a carrier for 40 years. I'm about to save lives, and we're doing that. I come out at night at 2:00, and I ask for a trail there last Saturday night. I was at 10:00 taking the parents, families. It's in a rink, I have an ambulance stand. I go far and beyond what this is doing, and, and I, for 18 years, I've been one man. I've had no business office.
John, I will not, not ever criticize your efforts, okay? I think you've put in exemplary efforts. Commissioner Bradford, the amount of time and efforts he's put in, beyond the call of duty. But as management, I have to question the results and, and, and the decision-making in the past, and it just gives me a lack of confidence about how that's going to occur going forward.
We never have the money to operate the way we should have been here. And if I had that, I would have grants to get money. I never asked you for the money. But every time I came before this budget, maybe four or five times, but I was turned down with monies to operate this stuff, and I had to do that. And now, now we got the tough book, we're moving forward, and we're sailing back at the mortgage company, have a good night, the mayor's office. We're moving forward. Get on, you got it.
Are we going to continue by the side?
I think so, yes. We're going, we're going to vote here in just a few minutes. Okay. Commissioner Alfred had a, yes, he's been on. We're going to let Commissioner Alfred, then we're going to vote.
Question for Mr. Catty.
Mr. Catty?
Mr. Catty.
Mr. Alfred has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Come on back up to the podium.
I just want to make sure that I understood what you said as far as the number of calls that you did. How many calls did you say that you're doing per year?
Seven thousand eight hundred, I think, two, nine, two.
Okay. My math theory may be wrong, I don't know.
Seven thousand eight hundred sixty one calls.
That, that figures, from what I'm looking at, that's about one every seven hours. Yeah, it's about one every seven hours.
We're running 4,000 more, Warren County.
The point is, it's one every seven hours. So, you know. Okay, thank you.
You got to have ambulances first, Mr. Alfred.
Well, Mr. Catty, you do. You've got five, you did 21 a day, and you've got five ambulances. Each one of those ambulances is running four ambulance, four, four calls per day. So that's one every-
You got to put the last call-
Well, yes, sir, I'm just, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's what we're running, so that's all I was-
Can we go to the last one?
Listen, I am for, two things here, I'm for treating our staff and our county employees to where they need to be. That's, I, I don't know if this is the provision where we need to get them there. That's why I asked about the career ladder as to what we have in place. I'm not looking for Band-Aid effect, I'm looking for a long-range, something that's going to take care of them further down the road than I'm definitely off of this commission. But there is going to be some things that really need to be looked at, you know, hardcore. I think here it's forced to put it in place so that, that all staff members are, are looked at in a, in a different light here, because when I say these numbers, I'm really, I don't know how many new hires that you have, I don't, I, you know, this information doesn't give me this. I don't know how many people that you've had there for several years, but when I look at what a new hire is making, and look at what they're doing, it's, it concerns me. And I, I think that there's some things that we really need to look at through salary review, and I feel like salary review aren't, aren't look at.
Okay, we're going to-
In your favor.
Okay, we're going to have two more. Commissioner Catty and Commissioner Bricken, did you, okay, okay, go ahead. Our officials are on the boat.
John, I really have a couple of questions.
John, do you mind coming back to the podium? If you don't care, speak into the microphones, because this has been taped. You're kind of tall there, if you'll stand in front of it, go, and hopefully, there you go.
John, if I understand it, I understand we have a high turnover rate when you get into EMS, as we did in the Sheriff's Department, but from what I've gathered from the surrounding counties, it appears to me that our turnover rate in EMS is consistent with the same high turnover rate experienced in those other camps. Do you know of that to be a fact or not? I know you talk to them all the time.
I don't know.
Well, we lose our guys, but they're losing theirs just as well. Okay, the, the second part deals with you ran 7,800 calls. How many of those were in the five, what I'll call districts of Tullahoma? I understand that- grant, when we wrote the first responders, and I'm trying to understand, out of how many calls did we actually run everybody? You've insinuate that we're running a lot. I don't know that we're running, how close are we running to a hundred percent? Are we ten percent, twenty, fifty, ninety? I don't have a clue.
I don't know. We're running a lot of calls. I asked a lot of people. When that call comes in, push the button.
And Bobby, something you said, I guess I don't understand your numbers. You were using a number of $31,000 for the salaries. I look at compensation from last year, I look at the compensation using post-compensation for this year. Salary numbers, I'm looking at 38,700, 36,700, 47,100, 34,800, 33,700, 35,000. That's without the increases, which then jumping up to 45,000, 43,000, 52,000, 41,000, 40,000. And that's using the same work schedule as we have from this year. My point being, in part, you have to look at not only the pay rate, but the way that pay rate is calculated using overtime. We have a much more lucrative overtime plan, which runs our compensation, actual compensation, up higher than the lot of the surrounding areas. They have a higher rate of pay with their people, because they have more people working, they have a different overtime calculation rate. They actually take home less pay than our people take home. So that is a trade-off that takes place, and it's a matter of how we do the compensation.
Okay.
Yes, sir, they do not. I went to visit both stations yesterday, and I think I've given somebody a lift, an apple or two, so they're occupied.
I got one question, I just want to make sure I'm not misreading something. Your calls that you're giving me, that seventy-eight hundred, is that all calls, or is that not, is that just emergent calls, or is that combinational?
It's everything, we get calls.
Okay, do you get any non-emergent? Are all your calls...
All non-emergent, yeah.
But I'm saying, do all your calls come from the compensation?
Yeah.
Okay, so that seventy-eight hundred, is it all calls that you give? Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna get down to voting. And everybody understands that it takes eleven votes to pass whoever, whichever one you vote for. Okay? Now, am I correct on that? Okay. The gentleman on the left said I'm correct, so... All right, the first, do what? All right, well, wait a minute, it's really up to the, passes the commission, do you wanna roll call, or do you...
Roll call, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call, okay.
Tallahassee caucus first, please.
All right, we're gonna vote on Mr. Jody Boss first. Do you choose the... Well, we'll vote on Mr... I, there's no...
I just say the motion, the company's getting Jimmy first.
Okay, we'll vote on Jimmy first, there's no connection there. Is that how the Tallahassee caucus wants to do, do Jimmy first?
I would.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Bricken, the discussion up here, I'm gonna get you in it, is the vote...
Say the name.
Say the name, so...
You said Bradford.
The discussion is that when we do the roll call, you say Bradford or Boss, and you say the name. Is that, is that how y'all, it's Tallahassee's position? Do you wanna do it that way, or you wanna do one at a time?
I honestly'd rather vote for each person. Jimmy gets the majority, Jimmy then defaults, but if he's not, then it goes back to the latest of September.
All right, everybody knows that, we're gonna, okay, we're gonna vote individually, we're gonna start with Jimmy Bradford. It has to have eleven votes for him to pass. If, if it don't, of course, we'll vote on Jody Boss next. Okay, so we're voting on Jimmy Bradford. We're gonna do a roll call vote, starting with Tallahassee caucus, then we'll do Manchester, then we'll do rural. Okay? That's how we're gonna do it, on both of them.
Mark Hill.
No.
Robin Hines.
No.
Jimmy Bradford.
I'll vote for myself.
Is that a yes, sir? Okay.
Mary Patton.
No.
Jackie Duncan.
No.
Chris Bricken.
No.
Roy Walker.
No.
Stephen Doe.
No.
Oliver Thomas.
Yes.
Ian Freebie.
Yes.
Bobby Bryan.
Yes.
Kevin Fan.
Yes.
Harry Chance.
No.
Carrie Farrell.
Yes.
Lee Nuttig.
Yes.
Virgil Walker.
Yes.
Barry Witt.
No.
Ken Block.
That's it.
Three sounds.
Yeah. Window, you have to do the window.
Oh, window. I'm sorry.
Okay, so now we're gonna vote on Jody Boss, the same way. What's the vote total? Ten, nine. Starting just like we did before.
Mark Kelly.
Yes.
Robin Hines.
Yes.
Jackie Bradford.
Yep.
Howard Patton.
Yes.
Jackie Duncan.
Yes.
Chris Bricken.
No.
Roy Walker.
Yes.
Stephen Doe.
Yes.
Oliver Thomas.
No.
Ian Freebie.
No.
Bobby Bryan.
No.
Mike Doe.
No.
Harry Chance.
Yes.
Barry Farrell.
No.
Lee Nuttig.
No.
Virgil Walker.
No.
Barry Witt.
No.
Does anyone wanna change their vote?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
No.
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 Okay. Does anyone wanna change their vote? Commissioner Bricken, you voted no, is that right? Okay. All right, let's have a count.
Seven, uh, seven years, whether...
I'm gonna go to the next guy, I want to see.
She's been tagging one little brat. Miss Chairman, will this come back to the end, so that's what we understand, just so we understand what we're hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a break.
You think we need one?
I need a beer.
Okay, all right. I tell you what, let's take a, let's take a ten-minute break. You're gonna keep up with the ten minutes, the ten-minute break, you got a timer there? You have a timer? Well, I tell you what. Go ahead and take the ten-minute break.
Okay, we're ready to get back to business here.
Ms. Patton.
I think so.
Okay. That's my appointment, and I'd like to appoint Frank Watkins on this committee. Now entertain voters to do that.
Thank you.
In a second, second. Frank, I think they like you. Any discussion?
Questions?
All right, questions, be called, let's vote. All right, let's have a count. Okay, that's what we get, all right. So you got all your, like, your criteria. That's the one, what we're gonna do. Oh, oh, yes. Did she ever come back?
Yes.
Renee, did you ever get that, what Renee did?
Yes, I did.
Vote.
Okay, I contacted the state, and they said, yes, you did have to run it in the paper.
Okay.
Because that gives the average citizen, that gives Joe Curl out here, the information that someone is gonna be appointed, so they can later be known that they might want to be appointed.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
There, did he hold a statue?
No, he did not.
Well, can we get, can we get that for Commissioner Bricken, the statue on there?
Well, and too, when he told me that it was a county attorney's question, but he did say, yes, that he did have to be in the paper.
What was the guy up here, does anybody wanna ask anything else about that?
That's Katie.
Good. The attorney says for safety that we need to publish that. We're gonna fill that page.
I'm not really concerned about safety, I'm concerned that we follow the rules.
Yeah.
Mayor, and I'd like to know for certain that that's the requirement. I'm sure it'd be in railroad, Indian, but not getting the right requirements.
Okay. Renee, is that the requirement? Is that what the state person told you?
That's what my court, if the state coordinator told me.
But Renee, he did not have a statute to back that up with.
No, he did not give you a statute.
Okay.
Do we have a statute on hand? Well, if somebody let me know ahead, I could have looked into this question and have the statute available. I don't know, 'cause I didn't know it was coming up. But if we have done in the past on one, and the state's challenged to, I would say it would be ill-advised to make an appointment without doing it. It won't hurt anything to run that notice and let people who may be interested be considered, and then we can vote on it after that's done, or next meeting. Y'all make a decision which way you go, but it'd be against my recommendation.
Okay, you heard your attorney, what do y'all wanna do?
Mr. Bricken said he read it last night, I don't think he's changed it overnight, so...
Commissioner Bricken, did you say you read the statute, you said you don't have to advertise?
It was very just straightforward, I can't quote it, but the legislative body of the county is authorized to fill vacant seats in any seat. That was basically, it's so, we're in session, this is a legislative body, it was just pretty much, that was it.
Can we not have a copy of the C-TAS manual in this building?
Yeah, we'll be right here.
What Mom read earlier.
What he read earlier is about the number of votes, not forms and things such as that.
It says the majority of membership of the entire...
I don't think it's very smart if we don't take our lawyer's recommendation, after all we are paying him to be our lawyer.
Wow.
This is just about filling a vacancy.
It does happen.
Majority of the membership of the entire county legislative body constitutes a form for transaction of business, including election of officials and confirmation of appointees, fixing salaries, appropriating money, and any other business coming before the body. A majority of the full actual membership, not merely a majority of the form, is required to pass all measures. A vacancy of the county legislative body will lower the number...
Right, there's also a section that talks specifically about how to...
About filling vacancies.
Mr. Chance, do you wanna come get the manual, I can look at it.
A notice to local county commissioners, purposes of filling an office, a vacancy may be a special requirement. Should any offices need to be filled, or a vacancy occur in any office required to be filled by the county legislative body, the county clerk, or if there is no county clerk, the county clerk's deputy, or if there is no county clerk or deputy county clerk, the acting chair of the county legislative body is obligated to give ten days' notice to every member of the legislative body to assemble at the courthouse in order to fill the office or vacancy. And that's TCA code 55113.
Okay, what's the will of the commission here?
Y'all remember when Tim Morse was appointed, now that we had to go back and redo it because we didn't have to pass it in the paper?
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like that the attorney has given us, you know, the information, and whether we agree or disagree, you know, for whatever reason, I mean, that situation that we've been provided, we have to act accordingly, so...
Okay. So, we're gonna let the moderator make a little speech here about...
Mr. Mayor, I think the TCA...
Well, thank you. Does anybody with a check, uh, um, does anybody care if you match that, if at all? Anybody lead anything to that? Good. Over to the next guy. Thank you, Commissioner.
Anybody have anything else? Number nine, jail review report, well, he wanted me to put this on the agenda before he knew he could be here, so I don't think anyone else has, he gave it to anyone else. I don't matter.
Does anybody on the jail committee wanna say something about, about the answer?
I could tell you what I know.
Oh, that's good. You're on the committee, so...
Okay. Well, number one, the bad issue that we've been confronted with there for some time, that issue's common. So we're no longer, aren't stopped by that issue. Okay? The problem that we have at the moment is some wetland issues that our property adjoins the industrial board's property. Some wetlands have, and have been mitigated in the past, and acreage, half acre, I think, maybe comes over onto the property that we purchased. They're trying to work this out with core engineers to make sure that we don't have a problem down there. The industrial board is concerned that we don't make some move that will endanger work they've done in the past to get the mitigation of their property. They don't wanna come down, start to build something and run into a problem, you know, where they say, well, you've got to revisit it. So that's a holdup at the moment.
Okay, so they're checking out the wetlands, is that what you're saying?
They are, they're working with core, we should hear from them shortly, I think.
Okay, well, thank you for that report. Okay. All right, let's go. Unfinished business?
Act 2013, proposed budget.
Okay, I'm waiting on a motion to accept a proposed budget here. All right, do we have a second?
Chairman.
Do we have any discussion?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Okay.
Let you jump in, but is everything in this budget funded? I understand that there was a salary review approval for a step grade increase in the trustees.
Well, it's gotta go back to salary review. Commissioner Duckett, you wanna speak to that? He is chairman of the salary review, it's gotta go back, it's not.
We're scheduled for next Tuesday to look at that issue again.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not on the.
I'll go ahead and express my concerns since I won't be able to make the meeting. Those positions have been reviewed for several years that I remember, I believe the same positions, and was not warranted, it's a change. And I would hate to see us, a few weeks after we pass a budget, pass raises that put expenditures outside of the budget at that soon in the timeframe. And I would also, I'm concerned, I guess it was my understanding in that one particular area, that in recent terms, we have hired some outside, contracted out some of the work that was being done in that office, and now we're looking to give people a raise when we've moved part of the work out of the office.
Like Commissioner Duckett said, it's, it comes back to review on Tuesday.
Yeah, it's supposed to be reviewed. At that time, we'll have some people involved. They weren't here this week, so we couldn't really talk to them about it. Chad will have, and asked for that some time ago. And this is to correct an error that we made several years ago. But we'll look at it again and make the decision.
Tuesday, is that right? I think it's coming Tuesday.
Tuesday at 1:00.
Okay. Okay.
One more question. We had a shortfall for the maintenance of effort for the library of $12,000. It was my understanding that that would be brought back up, so we would not have to ask the mayor to sign a certification, and he's not authorized to sign, I bet he hasn't authority to sign. Mayor, is that pulled back from somewhere else, so we can go ahead and fully fund the library?
Talked about this earlier this evening, but you wanted to comment.
$12,100 is the maintenance of effort question for funding the two libraries in the county, and it's my recommendation that we amend the proposed budget by putting $12,100 back in the appropriated line items for the library services, so we meet the maintenance of effort 2013.
If that's a motion to amend, I'll second it.
Did you second, okay. Any discussion?
Where would the $12,100 come from, Mr. Chairman?
Time to find out.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
And just, in talking to the budget director, this adjustment would not generate any changes that would cause the tax rate to be affected from being proposed.
So we're just voting on amendment, then we'll vote on the budget, okay? You ready to vote? Let's vote, see. Voting on amendment. Let's take one more time, Mr. General, what we're. We're voting on amendment to add the $12,100 back to the, uh, back to the. Back to the library, right? Yes, back to the library's budget. All right, let's have a count. Now, let's vote on the next one.
Got another amendment.
Okay.
I want to, I guess the motion is that no raises, that the only raised adjustments that are authorized to go into effect immediately are the step raises, and any other raises, salary adjustments will have to come back to this full commission for a vote.
Okay. You're making that in form of motion, okay. Do we get a second on that? All right, we got a second. Any discussion on it? Okay.
I don't know if, if you just didn't get the information or what on the proposed salary adjustments for the EMS. As I read a minute ago, Mr. Kelly made the motion to carry it forward, John made a comment a minute ago that that information was turned in. I know during the process, at least one time, and I can't remember, it wasn't, it's a hearsay, but I can't, I remember one time, I thought the mayor had told possibly one of our board members that we need to go to salary review with that request, which we did. I know one time in the budget finance meetings, Rob had made the statement that, you know, is any, any raises or adjustments or anything like that need to go to salary review. And I remember one time, when the telephone called us, I was asked if the adjustment or raises was in the, our budget, and I said, at that time, no, I did not think it was, because we were still going through a budget process, and we were still being whittled down. So, with that saying, we need to keep those people, we need to make those adjustments. We went through the salary review, went through the analyst authority, and you got a budget front of you with a zero tax increase. There was nothing hit. I just, I just don't, I don't understand where we're at, why, why we're doing it. I thought we did what we're supposed to do. So, you know, of course, I wanna, I wanna vote against it, because I didn't do anything wrong, and we need to, we need to adjust those people, or make not enough money for what they do.
Mr. Duckett, did you have something you wanna say?
Yes, I think the salary adjustments for the, for the emergency workers for the analyst authority should stay in place. I think that the salary review setting money is in the budget to cover that, then we will approve it, we did. So I think that should be in place, and I think those workers' salaries need to be adjusted. Make sure we're ready for the budget. We have a budget in place with no tax increase, and we need to go ahead and do that.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I certainly don't object that we pay our people according to what we should be paying them, and whether or not this is justified at that point, you know, I certainly believe it is, as are some other places. But this whole budget process went through, to me, a little bit flawed, in that other people were making sacrifices, and other budget areas were making big cuts, without really fully understanding that somebody in the group's giving raises and having increases. I don't think that will sit well with our, our employees, that we're treating one class of people different than they are, and that we're stepping out in a means to set some precedence. Reiterate what I said earlier, I can see us now, right after we get a budget passed that had no property increase, we're gonna get flooded with all of these requests for everybody else who wants their fair share, and we don't have the money to do it, so we're either gonna have to, after the fact, come in and recognize that we are gonna, gee, have to run up the taxes on everybody, or we're gonna have to take some action and tell our people, you're just not quite as important, these other people are more important. So, I think that's gonna be a difficult situation. I know the sheriff's been looking, and that he's wanted some adjustments, and there's other people who have, and I just don't think that it was a process that I'm willing to support, and that we're treating folks differently. We should have, if we're gonna give raises, another evidence, but an adjustment, we ought to do it across the county, not just to one class of workers.
All right. Commissioner Brinkin, Commissioner Offer, then Jimmy, Commissioner Bradford.
First of all, I'm gonna read the salary review section, gentlemen, that issue. Lee said, the budget finance committee is supposed to be looking at ways to take the three cents out of the property tax increase. He said, we have to come up with ways to cut back. They're looking at cutting out the overtime and cutting back with the equipment purchases. He told Jimmy and John that their plan is contingent on what comes out of budget finance. James Willen asked John, what does he think employees would want? He said about $11 an hour. Jimmy said, all they need is the blessings from this commission to go to budget finance committee. All right, this was last week. Budget finance committee has not met, now we'll restate it. The budget that we presented tonight, I had no clue that these salary adjustments for EMS were included in that. I made very clear that the budget that I was presenting, that budget finance only had step raises there. So I feel like this, all this was somewhat of a, almost a bypass point, I don't know. I had no trouble with us looking at adjusting the EMS employees, but I don't want it done kind of on the slide, and that's what I believe has occurred. This has not been properly flushed out, this has been only one committee, and we should delay this, and if it's a good thing to do, it can happen, accept him.
Commissioner Offer.
Some of the lines were, I was talking to Mr. Kathy a little bit ago. And in salary review, you may have already done this, but what I would propose, and I would like to see, either you pointing to my budget finance, or through salary review, is to take a good look, I know that we had some provisions down through the years as for step raises and some of the other things, but I'd like to see, you know, most of us have to work under benchmarks, and we have to, have to set productivity targets and have a working tool in place. As far as where we're at right now, where do we wanna be at next year, and start those benchmarks, so that we can understand what, what performance levels. I think that we need to look at the high performers, make sure that they're getting what they, what they deserve. We also need to look at those individuals who go for their certifications. We need to look at the different types of employee that we have as far as EMS, the sheriff's department, different ones in these divisions, they, and we may have a lot of this in place, but what I've been told, we don't have. So I would really encourage salary review. I'm looking at the long range, I know this is a good thing, maybe that Mr. Bradford has introduced here, maybe thinking that's gonna be the, you know, the fix. I don't think it is the fix, I think it's a Band-Aid. I'd like to see a long range program put into place, so that we don't have to budget on these types of things. It's already said, it goes to budget finance, you know what the dollar's gonna be, and there's no guesswork.
Commissioner Bradford, do you have anything? No, you're, you're next.
All right. First of all, you're, you're right, but what I, what I understand, years ago, when the step raises came about, that, that kinda took away, I guess, the performance, or evaluating employees, or whatever, but I do agree with that anybody that advances himself should be advanced accordingly. I don't know how that exactly works with the stepping grade raises, but I agree with you, anybody that, that's what I do, to help students, who can't even move on, should be, should be recognized, and that is, that is probably, probably one of the items that the EMS will be looking at in the future. I think it was also identified in the, one of the studies, or the study from CTS. Again, I say, I, I, there was no attempt to hide anything, I, I, I thought everybody was aware, I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't do anything wrong. I mean, I presented the budget, I thought people knew that it was in there, so, you know, I, what can I say? It's there, and, and as Mr. Kelly says, yes, there's, there's people who make, make some concessions. I think we made about $90,000 worth of concessions in our budget. Last year, we laid off six people, other departments hired people. Yeah, I, I know there's give and take, and we gave up six last year when people was hiring, so. I, I think, I think you need to support your EMS people.
Commissioner Offer.
Don't throw a book at me, but with some of the topics and some of the things that we're looking at, and for one thing, for me, it's certainly not, and for my comment, it's not being like, I think somebody did something that maybe should've been done. I'm concerned that will long range, and I've been concerned about this for planning for a long time, and I've brought it up to several different committees. I don't think we have some of, some of the things in place that we really should have in place to help our employees, and as I said before, our employees come down here one of our best assets that we have, and we need those employees to stay on board with us. And we're seeing that we're losing employees, I can see why Jimmy would want to try to promote this, but again, I wanna make sure that we're not just putting a Band-Aid on it, that we got a fix to it, so, thank you.
Commissioner Brinkin. Just wanna make clear, my motion to amend to hold salary adjustments effective July 1, the step raises, does not adjust the EMS budget that has these extra salary adjustments in it. That budget will stay with that, but it will have to come back for us and go through, I mean, they're suggesting go through budget finance, but come back to this body that would ratify making the adjustment to, to the step grades for these employees, and if that's wishes, the budget will have to present it, but it needs to be properly discussed through EMS and in budget finance, and this body needs to know this, we don't need to just, like I said, as far as I know, we had some discussion, EMS must've had some discussion back in February, and then this came up last week, and that's the only two times these adjustments have, had gone through any detailed discussion. So, the budget, I'm okay with leaving the EMS budget, I just cannot approve salary adjustments to go into effect July 1.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I tend to agree with Mr. Brinkin, and, you know, we wanna do what's right, and we don't want any confusion here, we're leaving the EMS budget in place, I think that our sincerity about coming back and looking at these grade adjustments, trying to be fair to these employees, and I don't think the step and grade system has become one of just campaigning for illegitimate increases. I think steps and grades, they go for the salary review committee, try to have people paid fairly, according to the proper grade that they should be. You have one employee in this county doing similar type work to another employee in this county, although they're in different departments, they should be in the same grade level, and we should be treating them that way. We need to look at this EMS, I think Mr. Brinkin's sincere, what he's offering up here is see if we competitively wise with other counties, fairness to these employees, we need to make these adjustments that we can make, so I would support Mr. Brinkin's amendment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Commissioner Brinkin, if you don't mind, would you state your amendment again, so that we can all be perfectly clear, and it's gonna take 11 yeses to pass a, pass the amendment. And it's going to take 11 yeses to pass a passed amendment.
To add in the budget resolution, that only raises, only salary adjustments or whatever, or the step raises will go into effect July 1st. Any salary adjustments or raises, or whatever you might want to call them, will be delayed until this body votes on them, hopefully in September.
But you also said go, to come through Budget Finance to agree. You want it to come through Budget Finance and then to this body, I believe is how you said it before.
And it should go for the appropriate committee. I would certainly recommend EMS. I would like to see EMS meet on this, and if they want to do it jointly with Budget Finance, fine. But, or they want to meet, flush it out, then bring it to Budget Finance, fine.
Okay. And then it comes back to this full commission.
And also Salary Review, I would say.
Yeah, I think it's already, okay. Does everybody understand the amendment? Takes 11 votes to pass it. Let's vote, please. Okay, does anyone want to change the vote? It's not, let's have the count, please. Okay, pass. All right, now we're going to vote on the proposed budget. Go ahead, probably. The without amendment, James, go. Do you need a minute?
We have two of them.
Oh, two, okay. Weapon, okay. Yeah, he said we need to bring it back up for discussion. Okay. Go ahead. Let's discuss. Anybody?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On this, I, you got the 2013 proposed budget. Sounds like we're just asking for a budget, or a vote on what's being presented here by Budget Finance Committee. Because our resolutions fall under number 11, Tax Leading Appropriation. So all we're basically doing, if I'm understanding this, is accepting with these amendments the Budget Finance's proposal for a budget. Is that correct?
That's right.
I think that's an additional step that we hadn't been going through, in fact.
Yes. I might get confused if you pick it. All right. Are we ready to vote now? Commissioner Kathy, are you ready to vote? Okay, let's vote. All right, let's have a count. All right. Give it up for this committee, and they can get the end of the time, and for the next one. Okay. Okay, Ms. Patton.
Resolution 2012-19, resolution setting the tax levying complicated and safely fiscal year beginning July 1st to 2012.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Two seconds, sir. Okay. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. Commissioner Dodger, is that an emergency call there? That's okay. That's, okay, but the way that was, I thought that was an emergency. Commissioner Farron, do you have any problem? Okay. Let's have a count, please. All right. Ms. Patton.
Resolution 2012-19.
Oh, you ready? Are you ready? Okay.
A resolution making appropriations from various finance departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Coffee County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and 2013.
And your final motion?
Move for approval with the chairman's.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All right, thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Okay. Okay, just a minute or so there. Everybody says, how everybody voting? Can you say when you're ready? You ready? Okay.
Resolution 2012-21, resolution to provide for the filling of vacant vacancies in Coffee County if county offices elected from districts in Coffee County from the newly adopted reapportionment plan.
Let me get a motion, I have a second, then we'll discuss this. Can we get a motion? All right, do we have a second? Second, thank you. Now, discussion. Do we need, election office, will you step back up here, please? In case somebody has a question. Just in case. All right. Discussion on this?
Just so I'm clear, the only real purpose of this is to make sure that when we do fill vacancies, it's under the new district layout, not the old one. So we deal with this in a couple of months. That's what, that's what this is, basically codifying that.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any other questions? Well, let's vote on it, buddy. Thank you. Okay, let's have a count. Ms. Patton, come on, give him just a minute here.
Copy County Department Internet Use Policing Procedures.
Okay, just give us a motion, I have a second, then we'll discuss.
So vote.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, discussion, go ahead.
Can I make a separate motion?
Maybe I want to, our faculty break now. What committee is this going through?
Just the IT committee.
Okay. Um, I want to make a motion to table this till September.
Okay, we have to have a second.
Second.
All right, we got a second. All right. Don's available, and let's, let's vote on it. You said till September, is that right? Okay. All right, let's see, wait, okay, let's have a count. Commissioner Brinkin, vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Okay, our proponent here says, since it's a motion to table, in September, we'll have to have a motion to take it off the table. So is everybody understanding? Is that right? Okay.
Purchase of property for rural Hollywood's department in an amount not to exceed $92,500 in contingent and power received and approved of the property appraisal.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion in a second, so we can talk about this.
I'll move to the approved discussion. Second.
All right, we got a second. Thank you. Now, discussion. Well, it's not, let's vote on it, then. Do you have a question?
No, I just want Ray to give us a...
Okay.
A brief rundown on it. No, I just want Ray to give us a quick rundown. I think he's run through all the bases and, yeah, to just share with us what...
Okay. Commissioner Allen.
All right, this property, we're going to put our heat scrap, store it in there, and also we can take oil based paint and put it in the building. That will take all this out of the main building. And a lot of this is flammable, and it's very dangerous for the, about a million, nine, two, three million dollar worth of trucks to be done. And, of course, we made an offer of $92,500 for the property.
And appraisal was?
Appraisal was $95,500.
Okay. Anything else? I think you've got a question. So, we ready to vote on it? Let's vote. There you go. You're good. All right. Let's have a count, please. Okay. Ms. Patton, you want to be down, too?
Thank you.
Okay. Does any of the committees...
Can we go to, before we do statements and announcements?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
And this is sort of a backdoor way to have a short discussion dealing with the policy that we tabled. Just a comment from my side.
Are you talking about on the IT policy?
On the IT policy.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
I had a couple of concerns with it.
Okay.
That I was going to motion to be sent back for further consideration. On the second page in particular, about the third paragraph down on that page, copyright licensing laws, I would ask to add, just the words export laws, consider adding that when someone looks at it. These software packages are subject to U.S. export controls, and certainly simply taking it on vacation and having one of these computers with them, they have to have licenses to leave the state with them, even though they have generally sell the software on them. The other part, I had two parts that I wish somebody would really consider. The part that prevents people, at the permission of their supervisor, to download the entertainment software, games, play games against owners on the internet, and to use real-time audio for their personal pleasure, and along with county employees using, making reasonable personal use. I think that just leads to confusion. I think these are paid for by the citizens of the county, and they run up internet usage, and that costs us money. There's no reason for these to be done for personal needs, and I wish somebody would really consider not having that in the future policy.
Can you email those changes to our office tomorrow? Or just make the change so that we can discuss it?
I've marked it up.
Okay, good.
I'll be glad to do that, and if you need more, I'll be glad to...
Okay.
One other comment on it, and it doesn't address it, I sure wish the policy would talk about things like not shopping on eBay, not visiting porn sites. It says some things about inappropriate, but I think those things need to be clearly spelled out, that that's unacceptable behavior, and we're not going to permit them to be used in those fashions.
Okay. Well, I don't know when the next IT meeting will be, but, you know, all of you commissioners are more, you're more than welcome to come to it. We'll let you know what's sent out. Commissioner West.
Mr. Chairman, those things that he was mentioning can be blocked at the server sites without the employee not having to think about where they can or can't go.
May I? I'm one of the thanks, budget director and staff, and everyone involved for putting the impossible up, getting the budget balance, and the hard work and effort by everybody. And what else would you say? It's a job well done.
And I just want a little question. Most of you don't know that Freddie Feeny has passed. He's a public commissioner for the county.
We don't know.
Freddie Feeny, High Media Arrangement, yeah.
Freddie Feeny.
Chairman, will we go a recommendation or resolution for him?
Yes, we will, please. I know he was in, he was secretary of health, urban science, law, for fifty years, so... Okay, make that, he's got the arrangements, and he's going to make that announcement.
Mr. Feeny is, will be at Central Funeral Home. Visitation will be from 5:00 to 9:00 tomorrow night, and the funeral will be 2:00 on Thursday. Central Funeral.
Any other statements or announcements? All in favor, stand up. He made a motion to adjourn.
We didn't ask for the public...
Well, even though we're adjourned, is it, Eddie told us, does anybody want to make a comment? Are you more out there? Okay. All right.[1688.12]